Good morning. Call to order, the Planning Commission, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call roll.
Commissioner Calley.
Present.
Commissioner Onstod.
Present.
Commissioner Duquesne.
Here.
Commissioner Kessley.
Present.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Now's the time for public comments. This is time set aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to item five, approval of the April 7th, 2016 minutes.
Move adoption of the minutes.
Second.
Motion on the floor? Can we move forward?
Move forward.
Okay. Item six is item PL 14-0048. Good morning.
Good morning. Before I begin, I just wanted to make sure that you all received exhibit seven and eight in your packet. It's a memo to the Planning Commission and then the revised tentative parcel map.
Great.
Good morning, Chair Duquesne and members of the Commission. My name is Tess Harris with the Ventura County Planning Division, and I'm the case planner for PL 14-0048. The case is for a zone change and tentative parcel map. The zone change is for rural agriculture 10 acres to be changed to rural agriculture 5 acre minimum parcel size. And then the tentative parcel map is a proposal to subdivide the 10.2 acre property into a 5.19 acre and 5.01 acre property, so two separate parcels. The site is located in the Miners Oaks community of Ojai Valley. The site is approximately 4,000 feet from the city of Ojai. This map shows the Ojai area plan boundary in blue. The city of Ojai is shaded, and then the red dotted line shows the sphere of influence with, for the city of Ojai. This project is outside of that. Specifically, the site is located at 319 South Waluna Avenue. It is south of El Roblar Drive, north of Lomita Avenue. It's approximately 100 feet south of Mesa Drive. This site is also about 2,000 feet to the east of the Ventura River. Then agriculture, open space, and residential development exists surrounding the property. The surrounding land uses, to the north of the project site, there's an undeveloped parcel. To the south of the project site is residential and agriculture use. It's a little bit cut off up on this slide, but to the north, there's RA 10 acre zoning. To the south is RA 1 acre and RA 10 acre. Then the surrounding land uses to the east and west of the site. To the east of the project site is RA 20,000 square feet and RA 5 acres. To the west is RA 10 acres. The west of the project site contains a horse facility, and east of the project site, on the opposite side of South Waluna Avenue, is residential and agriculture development. This is the view of the site from South Waluna Avenue. So the top photo shows looking at the site east of the driveway. Behind the pepper trees is an arena. And then the bottom photo shows the view of the site to the south, on the southern section of the property. These are additional views of the site from South Waluna Avenue. So the top photo shows the driveway entrance. The bottom photo shows the riparian vegetation along the ephemeral drainage which runs across proposed lots one and two. This is a list of the existing development on the proposed project. So proposed lot one contains two single-family dwellings already existing. Proposed lot two contains one single-family dwelling also already existing. On lot two, there are horses, there's four horses, a barn, and animal shade structures Again, the project is for a zone change from RA 10 acres to RA 5 acres and a tentative parcel map to subdivide the property from one 10.2 acre parcel into two approximately five acre parcels each. The applicant has proposed that no new residential dwellings would be allowed on lot two. That's pursuant to the level of service in Ojai area. So if that level of service changed from F, then there's the potential that the applicant could come in and request a change for proposed lot two. There are already existing development restrictions on the proposed project site, both on proposed lot one and proposed lot two for cultural resources. So there's an area within the project where the applicant would not be able to develop any further. The applicant's also proposed a 20-foot wide driveway access easement. So the driveway that you saw in a previous slide is the driveway that both lots would use off of South Waluna Avenue for access. There are road improvements to this that would be required for the site and driveway improvements as well. The Transportation Division has imposed a condition of approval that would require that the driveway meet the county standard plate. Then the Ojai Valley Sanitary District already provides sewage, and Miners Oaks provides water. And those connections are existing and would remain. This is the site plan for the proposed project. This is just an overview. And then this next slide shows a little bit in more detail. So the red arrows are showing the existing driveway and access off of South Waluna Avenue. It would come in towards the west and drop down to the south for the access to both proposed lots one and two. The ephemeral drainage runs along the southern portion of lot two and then goes all the way through lot one. The new lot line is shown in yellow, and the single-family dwellings that are already existing are shown in green. These are some photos of the proposed project site. This is lot one. These three photos show the existing primary dwelling on lot one and the pool. Again, these are photos of lot one. This shows the secondary dwelling existing on the project site. These are photos of lot two. The top left photo shows you where the lot line would be drawn between lots one and two. That lot line would be the side setback for each lot, which would be a minimum of five feet. The second dwelling on lot one would be 10 feet from the lot line, which is the dwelling to the right. And then the primary dwelling on lot two would be approximately 13 feet from the lot line. So they would both meet the five-foot minimum requirement. And then the right photo shows an arena on lot two. The bottom photo shows the existing barn. And then the bottom right photo shows, looking north from the project site, towards the horse facility to the west and to the north of the project. Again, this is lot two. There's a large field area along the lot, and there are two arenas. The bottom photo shows you the second round arena. These are some photos of the driveway off of South Waluna Avenue for both proposed lot one and lot two. And these pictures show you the ephemeral drainage that runs along lots one and two, along with the riparian vegetation. There's a mitigation measure that's been imposed on the project to require that the applicant restrict development in this area. Mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the proposed project, and during that we found, we identified two mitigation measures that would be required for the project. The first one is mitigation measure related to biology. It's a permanent protection of biological resources associated with the ephemeral drainage that you just saw on the previous slide. The mitigation measure would require that the applicant restrict development within 50 feet of the ephemeral drainage or riparian vegetation, whichever is the greater feat. And then the second mitigation measure is noise. This mitigation measure would require the applicant to limit their construction activities to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Saturday, Sunday, and state holidays. This is if the applicant proposed any future construction. We took this project to the Ojai Valley MAC on September 21st, 2015. The MAC unanimously recommended approval for the proposed project, and then no public comments were received during the MND stage or when we published the staff report. The applicable general plan policies are listed in Section C of the staff report. There were 24 policy sections in that area. If you have any specific questions about the general plan or area plan policy consistency, I'm happy to answer those. Staff's evaluation of the consistency determined that the project was consistent with both the area plan and the general plan. And then similar to the, with the subdivision ordinance and State Subdivision Map Act, as well as the zoning ordinance compliance requirements. So the lot, the project meets all lot line requirements, lot width, depth, area, access, buildable site. It meets the setbacks, energy requirements, right-of-way, utility, and water and sewer We also determined that it meets the development standards within the noncoastal zoning ordinance. Both of these sections are Section D in your staff report. If you have any questions about the specifics, I'm also happy to go into those. Then there are two sections of findings in the staff report. First, I'll discuss the noncoastal zoning ordinance amendment findings. There were five findings that need to be made, that the Board of Supervisors needs to use certain criteria when considering a zone change, and then determine that the project meets these five criteria. The five criteria are public health, public safety, general welfare, good zoning practice, and consistency with the general plan. The findings are listed in Section E 1 through 5 of the staff report. I'm happy to take questions on the specific findings. The bottom section of the PowerPoint slide shows you some of the conditions that we have imposed on the project to meet these findings. For example, there's an animal waste condition requiring that the applicant remove all animal waste solids on the project. They are to limit noise construction activities. The biology mitigation measure was imposed. And then there's some transportation conditions that were imposed on the project, so road development and right-of-way conditions as well. Then the subdivision map act findings. There are 17 findings listed in Section F of the staff report. With the project description, the mitigation measures and conditions of approval, staff found that the project would be consistent with the State Subdivision Map Act and the Ventura County subdivision ordinance findings for approval. Public noticing, this project was noticed in the Ventura County STAR. The staff report was posted on April 14th of 2016. We also noticed property owners within 400 feet of the proposed project site. We noticed the city of Ojai and the Ojai MAC as well. We also noticed an interested party that had contacted us about notification. Moving on to recommendations, this staff recommends that your commission take the actions as stated in Exhibit 1, Section H-1 through 3. Those are the following, that the Planning Commission certify your review and consideration of this item, that you adopt a resolution recommending that the Board of Supervisors find that the project will not have a significant impact on the environment, adopt the MND and mitigation measures program, find that the zone change is in the interest of the public and consistent with the general plan, approve the zone change, find that the tentative parcel map complies with the tentative parcel map approval standards, approve the tentative parcel map, and then specify that the clerk of the board is the custodian of the record. Then the third, the third action that we recommend that you take is that you certify that the clerk of the Planning Commission be the custodian of the record today. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm here and happy to answer them.
Before we have questions of staff, it's time to have disclosures. At this time, I would like to ask each planning commissioner to state on the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written ex parte communication regarding this agenda item that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information only if that information is not contained in the record before us on this matter, going to my right. Commissioner Calley.
I have no disclosures.
Commissioner Onstod.
I have no disclosures.
Commissioner Kessley.
I have no disclosures.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
No disclosure.
And I have no disclosures. Now we can have questions of staff. Are there any questions? Yes.
So the, the driveway is going to be an easement into the second parcel.
Exactly, yes.
Is that correct? And is there alternative in the future that would have to be explored to access that from a different area and have its own driveway to parcel one, or?
That hasn't been proposed. Both the Fire Protection District and Transportation Division reviewed the proposed project and determined that this driveway meets the standards required. The applicant, before going through the final map requirements, would need to get the Fire Protection District sign-off on the driveway specifically, as well as other aspects of the project. So if there are any improvements that would need to be made for fires requirements, that would be the time to do so. Transportation's also required driveway improvements as a condition of the project, but particularly because of the ephemeral drainage that runs along the project site, the existing driveway is the only driveway that's being proposed at this time for both lots.
Okay. And I had another question about the, the animal waste solids removal. Is that something that is being applied to all applications now across the board in that area? Is that part of the, for the, from the County General Plan or the Ojai Valley Area Plan?
I believe it's, it's both, the general plan and the area plan. There are a couple of different water policies. And Watershed Protection District has imposed the animal waste solids condition on that general area because of nitrate concerns in the Ojai Valley. So that's a pretty standard condition for most projects in Ojai.
Okay. And the road improvements seem to be rather extensive. Is that something that's being required at this point in time or for future development?
So it's for future development. The applicant has an option for road improvements to either improve the road right now or to submit a statement basically saying that they would agree to improve the road should the county decide to improve the road within the next 15 years. So they would agree to the portion of the, of the road along their project site. They would be responsible for that portion. That is also a fairly standard condition through transportation. If they expect that the road is going to be improved before 15 years, they typically require that the applicant improve the road. So this is, there are a couple of different options for the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Commissioner Onstod.
Is there any restriction on the number and types of animals?
There is. So previously, for the 10.2 acre lot, the applicant was allowed an unlimited amount of, of animals, of horses specifically. With this proposed project, I believe they're allowed to have 22 horses on the 5.01 acre lot, and then 23 horses on the 5.19 acre lot. So there is a restriction. They still have far less horses currently than, than they are allowed to have.
No restriction on any other form of livestock?
There is a restriction, so that, there's a, a table in the noncoastal zoning ordinance that goes through all of the different animal unit requirements. For equine, it's, it's a one-to-one, so there's 22 animal units that are allowed on the site. I would need to go into the...
Excuse me. So this basically would incorporate by reference what you're referring to?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any further questions? Commissioner Kessley.
Just for clarification purposes, what I read was that future residential dwelling units would be prohibited, and that's because of the level of service on Highway 33?
Correct.
What is the limitations with Highway 33?
So because there's a level of service F currently on Highway 33, any, any increased traffic or any project that would increase traffic automatically generates a significant impact to the project. With that, most, most of the time, or the applicant has decided to go the route by just restricting the lot to only the existing development, or only having one residential dwelling on the lot, rather than having a significant impact and needing to look at the, at the project differently. If, if you wanted to come back in, excuse me, and, and at a different time review the project, then we would look at the project and potentially do a modification or look at the conditions of approval, particularly if the level of service has changed in that area.
And that would obviously then be consistent with other properties around that same area?
Just one comment. Very good presentation.
Thank you.
I'm just speaking because everybody else has spoken.
(laughing).
The only, the only issue I had had to do with potential construction on the site and the hours of operation. The only thing I would say is I, I would like to see the, the termination of activities be 6 o'clock in the evening, not 7:00 p.m. in the evening, particularly as it relates to weekends and holidays. If people have their residences and they like to have a little bit of peace and quiet, and I don't think that's going to impede any activity that might occur as it relates to construction, so that would make, that would be one of the things I would suggest we do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate the thoroughness of your presentation. Now is the time for me to open the public hearing and have the presentation of the applicant. I don't have any speaker cards. Okay. Would you, would you like to come up and speak?
I'll give you some perspective.[1390.41][1390.41](laughing). I wasn't expecting much opposition. My name is Brent Lamo. I'm, I am the owner and the applicant. And I thought it'd be helpful just to get an idea of, kind of, my wife and I acquired the property 15 years ago, and quite honestly, it was in very bad state of disrepair. I used to be a home builder. I stopped building about 10 years ago, but it's kind of become a lifetime project for us. We don't have any intention of doing anything differently, but what's happened about seven years ago, the Miners Oaks Water District eliminated the agricultural rate. So our water rates went up about 500% for agricultural uses. And at that time, you know, shortly after that, we kind of went into a drought season, so we lost about half of our trees. Sunkist approached us and said, "We recommend no longer picking you because you're going to be, we're going to be sending you a bill each year because your water rates are going to exceed what we're going to be able to harvest." And so it became obvious that using it for agricultural purposes was going to be pretty difficult. The other aspect of it is, I'm getting older, and maintaining 10 acres just for a single residence is hard to do. I have two sons who are active military. They're both out of the area. They'll probably look to move back to the state of California. My intention is, is to have an opportunity, as I get five, 10 years down the road, if one of my kids wants to move back on the property to be able to have a parcel that they could own on their own, and, and just kind of move on. I acknowledge, we didn't acquire the property to develop it, really. We acquired it to own it long-term. We're a close family. We have the opportunity to be able to have some of our family live with us long-term, but we'd like to have them to be able to have their own individual parcel and jointly maintain it. I don't have a problem with the, the traffic issue being a measure that I impose on it. I understand. I drive the 33 myself. I moved there knowing that there's restrictions. So we didn't, we didn't acquire the property to ever intend to develop for the sake of adding density. It's really a matter of estate planning long-term, and the ability to have something that's maintainable long-term, because 10 acres, quite honestly, is a lot to maintain. I spend almost all my weekends maintaining weeds, maintaining the property to keep it under fire protection, and to keep it looking good. And it's a lot easier to do with five acres than it is with 10. So that's all, that's all I ask, is just some consideration of that. That's really my intention of it, is a long-term hold, but to have it set up where practically it probably makes more sense for us as owners. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. I just have one question for you. Do you accept all the conditions as they're presented in the staff report?
I do. I've worked, I've worked closely with the staff. It's taken a long time to get here. I haven't been in a, in any hurry to do this, and I understood going into it with kind of what I was, what I was getting in for. A question came up regarding a second entrance, and originally, I proposed looking at having a separate driveway coming in on lot one, and it would cross that drainage. And in looking at it, my civil engineer and working with the previous planner, we realized this is going to become controversial. There's going to be a lot of issues around putting a bridge across this, and we realized, you know, we don't need to go through this. We don't need to create a controversial project and an environmental issue. So that was really the only concern that we looked at years ago and decided, no, let's redo this. Let's make it very simple and as clean as we can, so.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions to this speaker? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So going through my cheat sheet, now we have speakers in favor, speakers opposed, rebuttal, skipping forward, closing comments by staff, seeing none. I'll close the public hearing. Are there any comments?
Well, it seems like the, the area has a variety of lot sizes, so this is not something that is an issue, and I don't have any problems with the, with the, with the proposal, and seems very thorough, extensive restrictions and, and requirements. So I'm happy to move approval of staff recommendations.
You have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
None. The only thing I would say is, I noted with a smile on Commissioner Onstod's face that the applicant described his weekend activities.[1694.52][1694.52](laughing). I sensed, I sensed some camaraderie there.
We're just looking for our screen to have the, the voting come up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay. The next item is discussion report by the Planning Director on Board Actions and Other Matters.
Thank you, Chair Duquesne and members of the Planning Commission. Congratulations. We might have set a record this morning.[1745.45][1745.45](laughing) 25 minutes. I also want to...
And, and we started on time.
And we started on time. I saw that. I thought, whoa, am I right?
We didn't have any coffee?
There's no coffee? Oh, that's a first. Maybe we, maybe that's how, we were going to finish really quick this morning.[1763.41][1763.41](laughing). No coffee, and we're working our way through.
You usually start with the temperature to get us to move.
I do want to say, congratulations to Tess. It was a very good presentation, and I listen to them all the time, and even as I was listening to them, I was telling her boss over here, you know, "Well done," and, and that maybe should be a standard of a good PowerPoint, a great presentation, and so, well done, Tess. Appreciate that. So I just want to go over a little bit your upcoming agenda and the board's upcoming agenda, which is full of appeals from your planning commission.[1798.25][1798.25](laughing). agenda, which is full of appeals from your Planning Commission. So let me start with what we have going on at the Planning Commission. So we have an upcoming hearing on May 5, and I understand that Commissioner Anstott isn't going to be here that day. We have two items. We have a conditional use permit for a construction of a solar energy facility in Fillmore, east of Fillmore. And then we also have an appeal of a Planning Director decision of a conditional certificate of compliance. So we have both of those things on the May 5. We have not everybody here again, it looks like, until, is it June 2? I guess May 26. May 26, all of you are available too. So so far, the May 5 is what I have. I also have an October 13 on your agenda. We put that out there so far out because it is a really critical item, and we want you to keep your eye on that date if possible. That's going to be our last phase of our local coastal plan update, where we come through and do really some of the most difficult work that we've done so far, which will include the wireless communication facilities in the coastal zone, the coastal trail, and really tackling environmentally sensitive habitat. And so those three things are going to be here October 13. What we have going on at the board on May 3 is they are going to hear the Wayne J. Sand and Gravel appeal, appeal by the city of Moore Park on your 5-0 decision to approve and expand a mining facility in Grimes Canyon.
What was the basis of the appeal?
They didn't like it.
It's, okay, okay.
Yeah. Excuse me. What's the status of the legal... Did the county not file with Moore Park or Fillmore National?
Yes, yes. You know, I don't know the status of that. Jeff Barnes is the county counsel on that. So when he's here next week, I think he gave a brief presentation the last time we were here on what they were doing. And so he can present that next time that he's here. Also, we have this case moving forward, the case that you heard this morning for the zone change. Those move forward to the board. And so that will be heard on June 7. And then also, your 5-0 denial of Mr. Michael Fowler's events facility in Hidden Valley will be heard by the board on June 7. And then on June 14, the board will hear what you've already heard and approved to move forward to them, the first phase of the LCP's updates. So you heard that a couple of weeks ago. That's going to the board for their final decision. And then the Marata Agnew appeal, I mean, the Marata Agnew case that your board heard, I mean, that your commission heard, has been appealed to the board. And so they'll be hearing that three oil well in Upper Ojai. Trying to get a hearing date set for that in June because that applicant has been waiting for a very long time through a series of several hearings. And so we're working with the board right now to hopefully get that heard in June. But the board calendar is very full right now. So probably either June or July. And then also, Anna has worked out a nice Planning Commission task worksheet that we're going to be going over for things that you ask us to follow up on. And so we're just going to keep a tally of the things that you ask and then how those things have been accomplished. So the hearing that we had on 4/7, there was a few different things. There was the medical marijuana meeting that you wanted to be notified of. And so you were notified, and I think I saw that you sent out either yesterday or this morning a flyer on that. So that's an RSVP. It starts very early in the morning, 7:00 or 7:30. And then there was also the issue that Commissioner Callie brought up about wanting somebody to come here and maybe talk about, you know, the warrants and how we could get things done on perhaps on the issue we heard on Marata Agnew, what it would take to put a sign saying, "Beware of the trucks," or "Trucks are coming," or any sort of lights. And so we're working on getting a small presentation on just what that entails, working with Caltrans, and if they would be willing to take that on. So that's definitely on our list. And then also, Anna and Commissioner Callie worked out some issues that we thought when we had very large reports, how it would be easier for you to read and go through. And so some of those things included, for large files, and they're going to be divided into multiple downloads. And then when mailing them to the commissioners, we were going to include the number of exhibits sent, the exhibit number with the subject title, and the number of pages in each exhibit to see if that will, that will help. So anything that your commission, you know, can offer to have us make it easier for you, we understand that you're on the iPads and they have their, you know, pros and cons. So anything that we can do to help you out. So we're working away on those things. And I believe that's all I have. You have anything for me?
Thank you. Are there any items the Planning Commission wishes to introduce at this time? We blew our half hour. Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.